No one? Glenn? That's unusual. Okay, then we'll move on to the agenda. And today is our first look at, run through if you will, of the recommendations that were made at last Thursday's meeting regarding an animal shelter. And Council, you've had some time to look at this document, hopefully ask some questions. I know Councilman Gary Smith asked for some data that was being put together by the staff. So I would recommend that we just start off on item number one. And we'll talk about that and kind of get information on that. We'll just move through it that way. Excuse me. If there's anything that we get to that we may need additional information from staff, or if, I mean, I wouldn't see today as some big knockdown drag-out on an item at this time because there's still a lot of data that we've got to get. So I just figured we'd just start at the beginning and go from there. Is that okay?
Yes.
So we'll do item one, which is recommend a new facility constructed and owned by the City of Longview and our Gregg County to serve as an open mission shelter for Gregg County with the capacity to handle the intake needs of our community. Basically what this has said, in my understanding, is that the City of Longview would, in partnership of some sort, some size of commitment from Gregg County, would construct a new animal shelter. The new animal shelter, as was proposed, is around 28,000 square feet. The initial cost estimates on that facility is $4.3 million. And for the, excuse me a second, for the newspapers, Glenn, the numbers we're throwing around today are very soft at this point. So I just want to make that point. The 28,000 square foot was $4.3 million. Or was it 20,000 square foot?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, excuse me. A 20,000 square foot facility at $4.3 million. Thank you. Okay? And again, the payment of that facility would be the City of Longview and, to some extent, what level, we don't know at this point in time, but with Gregg County. I've also began the process of talking to the other mayors that are currently utilizing Northeast Texas Humane Society to see what level of interest. My first meeting was today with Mayor Spradlin with Kilgore and the city manager of Kilgore. They were very receptive of the recommendations. They think it's well overdue. And basically, the discussion centered around what their level of interest might would be to go toward the construction, okay? And if they were to commit to some amount toward the construction, then what the annual lease amount would be, would be reduced as compared to no involvement or commitment to the construction. Obviously, the cost of the annual contract would have to go up. That number will be determined long-term, as I understand, Council, by either a cost per animal or a per capita costing. In other words, there are people that live in that city. Those formulas have to be developed. But in terms of paying for the facility, that's where we'd be looking. Questions? Go ahead, Garrett.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Are we going to have any help from some animal advocate associate here at Longview?
Good question. I would hope, Gary, what we're going to be looking at is, I guess people get tired of hearing me this public-private, but I would sure hope that as part of the construction that we have, you know, people step up with donations toward that construction.
Yes, sir.
Whether it's the naming rights of the facilities, whether it's, you know, paying for different items that are going to be needed, you know, in the facility. But I would strongly, I would hope that there's going to be, you know, private participation as we move this process forward. I think there's a lot of people, a lot of individuals, that are very capable of contributing to this process that are sitting on the sidelines to make sure that we're for real, that we're going to do something. They've heard for quite some time about a new animal shelter and it's time to put up a shut-up.
And in my opinion, I think that's a good idea, Mr. Mayor, to try to bridge the gap, right? To say between a public-private organization to come in and help us assist in getting the shelter together and make it what it should be for the next 30 years.
Right. Anybody else have any questions on that? Okay. Item number two, recommend that the facility be regional in scope to provide services to governmental entities within Gregg County so long as each are willing to financially participate in the shelter's construction, which, again, I am working to organize meetings with the other mayors, Glade Water, excuse me, White Oak, Lakeport, well, and Lake Cherokee has a few animals that are actually brought to the shelter. Mary Ann, who else?
Gregg County.
Oh, and well, Gregg County we've talked about. Okay. Item A of number two is that the municipalities are approached to determine their willingness. Okay, so we're doing that. We further recommend the possibility of utilizing animal control offices as kennel attendants be explored with these municipalities. Currently, Kilgore has two animal control offices, but that's not what they do 100% of the time. They've been cross-trained in other areas. And when we discussed it, there was some discussion by the task force in what we saw at Chattanooga, they, the animal control office actually works for that organization, not the city. And potentially, that might would be something to consider, that if everybody, if all those cities and the county agreed that that's what should maybe take place, maybe all of the animal control offices would fall underneath, which we'll get to in a minute, the 501(c)(3). But they'd all actually worked for that organization. So now you've got everybody in the whole county, their needs for that are taken care of by this 501(c)(3). Kilgore, I mean, their eyes lit up about that. Well, we'd truly like to see that, so.
Does that mean the kind of control people would be employed by this?
Yes.
And would not be on the city payroll?
Right. Right. And of course, I don't want to scare our city employees at this point, but right now we have three, we have place for five. And obviously, they're, some of these employees are long-term city employees. I know they like the benefit package and the other things that we have. And so as the discussion would move, you would have to look at some of the benefits and other things. I mean, they've, some of these people have been into the retirement program now for quite a while. So all of that would have to be flushed out, you know, to see how, but that has been discussed. And there was, from Kilgore, there was a strong, you know, interest in us doing that. Number three, what's being discussed and what has been recommended is that a 501(c)(3) nonprofit be set up to run the day-to-day operations of the facility. Again, that's sort of modeled after the Chattanooga facility. City of Chattanooga and whatever county that that is, I can't remember the name of the county, but that's the way they came up with it. You would be talking about a board of some eight to 10 people made up of, I think we've talked about other cities that will participate from a construction standpoint, would get seats on the board or get a seat on the board. We've talked about the Humane Society with their experience base and the things that they've been working on, maybe have two members of the Humane Society that would be on that board. And to make up, if we have people to step forward to donate towards the construction, obviously, they would have a seat on the board. And we've got task force members that are here today. We would like to see some of those members on this board as well. Okay? So the discussion has been that that board would in turn hire an executive director to actually manage the day-to-day operations of the facility. And it would be almost like what we have with our city manager. I mean, the day-to-day operations would be, you know, David runs, but in this, in this concept, that person would run the day-to-day operations, the hiring, the firing of the personnel, so forth and so on. Any questions on that? It was also, yes, sir, Mr. Frost.
You through with that one?
On number three, I'm going to number four.
Okay, well, back up there on number two, we skipped B, didn't we?
No, we talked about that. Secured through public funding.
Excellent. We discussed that.
Okay, let's go backwards then. But that, what we're talking about is a public-private, okay?
Yeah, you did say that.
This is saying secure, to come up with an annual operating budget before anything is done.
Okay, let me back up, let me back up on that. Yeah, that is correct. The, again, soft numbers, Glenn. The initial numbers that I was given just yesterday by staff is to operate this facility is $700,000 a year. Okay? Again, that's without, what about, I understand that there's a lot of volunteers that would like to volunteer at the current Humane Society, but due to the space limitations and whatnot, they really can't. So this number, I would say is conservative in terms of that it's probably high in that we're really going to have to drill down on that number. And I've asked Mary Ann, who gave me the number, to get with, and maybe Kevin has a breakdown of how you get to 700? Do you have it on PowerPoint?
Yes, sir. I can sort of do that if you give me just a second. That is not it. No? If you'll just take me to the.
Why are you getting that? That number does not include the current cost or the current expense that we have for animal control offices. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right. That is for operating the shelter itself. And it's the one that says estimated animal shelter cost, annual, one-time, and labor. The numbers that are coming up here, sorry, my mouse is not working. Do I have to turn it on?
Man, my mouse isn't working either.
Didn't like either one of us.
Squeaking a bunch, but it ain't working.
The numbers that you're seeing up there are really based on the City of Irving. And the reason I utilized them was that they did a very good job of breaking out the different costs that were involved. Also, they have a shelter that was kind of the same size as the maximum, is it working now? Is the same size as what the maximum recommendation that was given to you, the 28,000 square foot one. And also have veterinary services. On that 700,000, about 250,000 is the veterinarian services, okay? That's where you have the spay, neuter, the care of the sick and injured as they come into the shelter. About 250,000 is that cost.
Okay, Kevin, that is because the vet and the vet tech would actually be on the parallel work directly for?
Yes, sir.
The facility.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That'd be full-time?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a vet and a vet tech, so it'd be two. Correct?
Yes, sir. That's the way Irving does it. You could contract that out for a set amount per year.
Dr. Glaze, what, be able to do it for about two and a half a dog, right? No, no, but the thing, the thing the other side of that is, is, you know, in the adoption, you know, I mean, that amount should be recouped when the dog is adopted. So it's not just an expense. There should be a credit to that because when you, when the adoption takes place, you're going to recoup that. And it also includes the chip, okay?
Is it a partial recoup?
Oh, I don't think so. You know, Sidney, one of the things about that Chattanooga facility and I hear about the facility in Austin, which is actually a city facility, the facility out in San Diego, they make money, okay? They really make, I mean, they, I'm not saying it's a, you know, it's a, you know, a Fortune 500 kind of deal, but they're making money. But I mean, you know, they're recouping, you know, every bit of those types of expenses when that dog, when that animal's adopted.
How much is 750,000 you're talking about? Do you have a credit in there for the recapture on the, for the revenue coming in off the adoption?
No, sir, I do not. And the reason I do that is I think my job here is to tell you possible cost. And revenues are great. But at the same time, too, I think you are correct in thinking that way. There will be a revenue stream of some type. Going back to the actual number again, 250 was the veterinarian services. Around 400,000 is the actual operation of the shelter itself. I will say that the City of Irving has 15 staff members. About six of those are field staff. The rest are operating in the shelter itself. And then about 100,000 is the administration part. And that is the cost of that director that the mayor mentioned earlier, as well as a volunteer coordinator, talking about getting some volunteers there, as well as some educational outreach.
How many volunteer staff do they have on a full-time basis?
In the City of Irving?
Yes.
Well, it's a little difficult to utilize them as a model there because they actually share their space with their local Humane Society. So there's a little bit of overlap. They tend to run about, you know, three volunteers per day. That can be anywhere from 30 minutes to eight hours worth of volunteer.
Well, you say they share their space with local Humane Society. I thought that's what we were talking about, or maybe I'm missing something there.
Well, and again, Irving's a little bit different model. The reason I chose them is because I figure the cost is the cost, whether it's the city operating it or it be a 501(c)(3). Irving operates the vast majority of the shelter. I would say probably 26,000, well, probably closer to 22,000 square feet. The other 4,000 square feet that they have is operated by their local Humane Society. And it's purely an adoption outreach that they do.
Sidney, one thing, one thing in Chattanooga, Alicia, how many volunteers do they have in Chattanooga?
In Chattanooga, I believe, 130.
130. I mean, there were people all over that place, whether they were walking dogs or brushing cats or, I mean, they were all over the place. In Chattanooga, the Humane Society does have a facility, but it's in conjunction with the county, okay? The county and the city of Chattanooga over there, they fuss and fight. They don't, they don't, they don't G-haw real well, okay? So our thought is, because we do get along, that we do it together instead of having two different facilities.
Well, this 750,000 figure, is that including a number of volunteers?
No, I'm saying that doesn't probably, that doesn't include any volunteers.
It does not. So that's all paid personnel then? So we might be able to reduce that with volunteers?
You can. I mean, honestly, you always run the risk of what happens when the volunteers don't show up?
Yeah.
And you still have the work to do.
But I know, I know my wife has expressed to me that if there was a larger facility where.
Should send you down there to do some work?
Yes.
Good, good family. I knew, I knew, I know I liked that woman.
I think what the mayor said, with a larger facility with more floor space, you would have a considerably, a considerable number amount of people who would want to volunteer.
Yes. And that was even a recommendation, recommendation from the task force is to locate it so that you can get that kind of involvement from the public.
Yes.
Other questions? Again, these are just kind of, I would use the word, again, conservative numbers because we want the worst-case scenario, then we work it from now. Just one second.
They're going to shut down?
Hey, the reason we're at where we're at is because a letter we received says that at the end of next year, I think it is?
Yeah.
Okay, they're, they're not, they're going to function, I would think, but they're not going to function in housing and taking in and sheltering animals. Item, item, we talked about item three. What about item four? I think we've discussed that, but we recommend that above recommended 501 be required to maintain one board member appointed by the governing body of every governing entity participating in the new facility. So in addition to the board members elected pursuant to the organization bylaws, with every board member having one vote. Okay? Number five, we recommend the scope and authority of the animal shelter advisory committee's role in governance of the shelter be expanded by the city council to include supervision of the shelter's compliance with the guidelines for standards of care in animal shelters from the Association of Shelter Veterans, compliance with standard operating procedure of the new facility, and conducting an annual review of the compliance with the save rate goal and strategic plan. We further recommend that the current ACAC be expanded to include additional committee members by appointment at council. Are y'all, Dr. Glaze, let me make sure I understand this. Are y'all recommending that, besides having this 501(c)(3) board of directors, that now on top of them, we're going to have, you know, the Animal Shelter Association or somebody else overlooking them?
We already have that. That's a state requirement.
Correct.
We have that. Kristen is the chairman of that, and I'm on it.
Couple of other people on it.
Doc, come up, come up just for a second. Just make sure it counts on the sands. So we would need to do the same thing.
That was a city advisory.
I think what we were recommending was just expand the role of the advisory committee that we're on. And we go once a year and go through the Humane Society, look at the facility, make suggestions, that sort of thing.
So that's in place right now?
That's basically all that is. Uh-huh. And then, but we would like to expand that to help out with the new, new facility, with that board of directors, that sort of thing.
Everybody clear on that? What's that?
He said expand. What?
No, 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 not, it's not, it's not facility, Sidney.
No, I mean numbers.
It's expand their role to where besides what they're doing for the Humane Society now, they're going to do for this new board.
This, yeah, we've been, this has been going on for about a year and a half now, two years. And it's a state requirement.
We got to have that anyway.
And we did the lease law a couple of years ago. That's when we formed that animal advisory committee. And then we started checking on the Humane Society. What we'd like to do, what the letter said, what Kristen was asking there is, is that we expand the role in that to these other cities, like other board members, to make this committee a little bit larger to encompass everybody in the county.
Okay.
Right now, it's just locally.
Now, that's ASAC, is that the?
Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
And we're the ones, and we're the ones, I think, put that into place.
And that is a state requirement that we have that?
Just a second.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Glaze? The state already has a requirement for animal shelters. Is that correct?
No.
The state has a statute for animal shelters. Am I correct?
What do you mean, Gary? You talking about the governance?
Governance of animal shelters in cities.
Mr. Smith, if I can help just a little bit?
Okay.
Yes, there are rules about how a animal shelter has to be overseen, and that is this Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. And there are details about what they look at.
Okay.
And typically, that is paperwork, training, and then the, well, the operation of the shelter as far as sanitation goes.
Okay, are we going to expound on that with this ASAC?
No.
That actually was what the recommendation is stating, is that on top of those state-required things that they would do, they would also help this board, the 501(c)(3), look towards making improvements as far as, quote, the save rate, the number of animals that don't have to be euthanized. We want to maximize that. I believe that's what the intent of that recommendation was.
So we'll have to develop a new set of compliance for?
Kristen, come on up, Kristen. Let's get our legal expert up.
She's bringing this deal anyway.
Now, the intent of that recommendation really is to expand upon the scope. The Animal Shelter Advisory Committee now has limited, the state has limited requirements, very limited. And while we check a box that says the shelter has standard operating procedures, as a committee, we don't go through them. And a lot of the problems or complaints about the current shelter has been about, you know, different cleanliness things. And as the committee, we really don't have the authority to make a recommendation to them about it. So we'd like to have the ability to say to any facility from more of a city committee with that type of authority, here are the things that you need to be looking at. And there are shelter veterinarian guidelines that we'd like to be able to go through with them as a procedure as well. So just an additional oversight. Obviously, we would hope that the board would take care of that themselves, but just in case it, you know, we get to the place where we are now, we want to have that backup so that we can provide that.
But Kristen, by state statute, Gary, so we have to have, even if it's a limited role, we have to have that anyway.
Yes.
Yes.
So we would, we would, council would consider expanding that, that authority or that role to help, help that board, you know? Okay.
One more.
You still, okay, Sidney.
All right, I woke up.
You did?
Yeah. If you have a disagreement over a particular matter between the ASAC and the board of directors running the center, who's, who's the boss?
Wins. I think our intention in setting this up with the city or some sort of governmental entity owning the land now and the building is that the city wins. So we, again, aren't in the same position where y'all are kind of having to say, well, it's out of our hands when citizens come and complain to you about something that's going on.
It would come back to the city.
Right. So that your word is the final word about what needs to happen.
Okay, so if you had a conflict between two different points, then it would come to the city council to decide?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Come on, Rick.
Well, I don't really see that because some, a lot of the members that are on this, this particular governance board or oversight, if you will, or there's a good chance someone might even be on the new 501(c)(3), so.
That means, you know, we got, what, five or six, maybe, or seven?
On the Animal Shelter Advisory?
Yes, right now.
We have four, I think. There's four of us.
Four in it, four. So we're saying that, well, if we do this, then we get some money from Glade Water and Kilgore and?
Right. With the idea being if we expand it, stuff won't fall in city council's lap because that committee will be more equipped to handle it and have better oversight and more members.
All of them are locally appointed people in Longview right now.
Yeah.
How often does this ASAC meet?
We're required by state law to meet three times a year.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move to item six. And that is, task force recommends that shelter be located in an area that will promote the public's visitation, involvement with the future shelter. As such, we ask that such factors be considered along the property's availability, cost and expandability. And I think that's very key, the expandability. The task force originally voted to recommend that the generous offer of the Humane Society of Northeast Texas 4.3 acre site located along HG Mole should be accepted. However, task force members have requested other potential locations be considered for construction of the new facility council's discretion. Council, the primary, the other primary site is the acreage up on the north end of Hensley Park. And is it six acres or is it nine acres, Kevin?
The original site was actually right at four acres. The, I believe the park itself makes up a total of nine. But you already have existing facilities that are there for softball, as well as, I believe, a parking lot and restroom facilities on the north.
So how many acres are up there available if that was the site that was decided on?
There are four acres that are linear that are available. Of those, there's, there's some topographical issues. There's hills, there's valleys, there's a ditch that's in there. So it's probably a little bit smaller than the actual four acres that I'm quoting now. There was also some difficulty with the original family that had donated that. That was an issue that was brought into the newspaper. I must tell you, because I'm the Director of Development Services, there are also other projects that are being considered for that area up there that the private industries have said they will not come if an animal shelter is placed there.
Like what kind of businesses?
Very large anchor stores. And I don't want to name particular names because the projects haven't really gotten that far into development yet. But they are, honestly, I believe, stores that we would want.
And what is their biggest, and so what is their issue?
Their issue, quite frankly, is that they, they tend to think of an animal shelter as being a pound, to put it bluntly. And I think they are fearful that it would be the pound, that it would be an endeavor that they wouldn't want to be close to physically.
Okay, and a lot of that's due to the incineration?
Yes, sir.
And, and the equipment today, the technology today in incineration, there's absolutely no odor, okay? And there's a number of reasons for that, but, but the BTUs, the temperatures that are used are extremely high and the filtration systems are extremely good. And when we visited shelters with this new technology? Uh, and when we visited shelters with this new technology, there was absolutely no odor at all. And, and what I'd suggest, not that we're doing this, but, but I'd sure like to offer to sit with you and any of these other box people to discuss what we're talking, we're not talking about a dog pound.
You bet.
You know, we're, we're talking about a state of the art, you know, first-class facility. And again, it's not really a shelter, it's, Mr., Mrs. Simmons got some other name for it, but it's, it's, it's more about an animal adoption center. We're not gonna use the word shelter, in my opinion, anywhere around us. So, not that, not that that's where, where council's going, but I, I'd be happy to sit down with you and whomever these people might, would be, to really give them a better look at what we're really talking about.
You bet.
I mean, if I'm not mistaken, the one in, um, San Diego, isn't it right in the middle of a business district, Alicia?
It's in the wealthiest part.
Wealthiest part.
And all the ones that Mr. Arms has built, several of them in the United States, they all are in the central, uh, developed.
Okay.
Doesn't the, uh, doesn't the one in, in San Diego choose the animals that are coming in, though?
Now, San Diego is different than the one in Rancho Santa Fe, where Mr. Arms is home to.
We gotta, uh, why don't you, you gotta come up to the microphone.
I'm usually my mouth is down.
Uh, the Rancho Santa Fe is where Mr. Arms' home is. The, um, San Diego is a different than the one that he's home to.
Okay, but they?
They just have always said, Mr. Arms, the newspapers put, San Diego. There's two, there's two different centers.
Let me explain what I think Sidney's talking about. Sidney, what Mr. Arms' shelter is, um, he, they use the term no kill, and Alicia corrected me the other day, that what no kill really means is that no animal is, is euthanized in the facility due to lack of space, okay? So what Mr. Arms has done, his facility does not euthanize due to lack of space, okay? Now, animals that come in sick, animals that, you know, have mental disorders or can't be adopted.
Unadoptable animals.
They're, they're euthanized, okay? But he, he's got, he's got, from his facility, a reach out into the, in, in, into the state, into the country.
Right. Well, his centers different than the ones that he goes and builds.
But he gets the adopt, he gets the adoptable animals, okay?
Yeah, that's what I understood from the meeting, that, that he, the city does not just, for lack of a better word, bring them and dump them.
No, he's not a, he's not a public intake.
Yeah.
But that's not the ones that he's trying to help us.
Yeah, yeah.
The animal centers that he builds all over the world right now, they are, they do it in different forms. What they do is they do what form, what, they come to a city and form what is best for your community. And they are, they're like public partnerships, or some's just city ran, they're different ways. But what he does is show you how to bring income into that facility with your services from the city.
No, it was a good meeting.
You know, it's just different entities in there that have to do with animals, so that there's more people coming into that animal center and seeing the pets. And when they're more involved, and you get different contracts from schools, and the schools come in there and do tours, and they pay for the tours. It's just all kinda have to get revenue to help with your expenses.
I think his adoption fee was a hundred and fifty?
Now, his is different.
Okay.
That's what they kinda kept trying to focus. Now, Rancho Santa Fe where he is, is one of the richest cities in the United States. But the other cities, like Chattanooga and different ones all over, it is not due to the price, it's, it's trying to get the animals, just get anyone, the quality of the care, it's, it's the new way of improving what people think of your city, how you're being more humane, how you're working towards the newer solutions of kinda, like with me, I have Cherry Hill address store, so therefore I'm always learning how to market it better and to display it better. And I guess that's why I've?
Your new store is much more?
So she keeps painting in front of it?
Yes, you know, it's, yeah, you know, I mean, I've had it nineteen years, so it's more in the center or more, more, you know, definitely where people, so it's continuously, that's what I do, is trying to figure out how I can sell those, how the people can, that work in there are happier, just making it better for everyone.
Right.
So that's how, what he's about, is marketing your animals.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, let's come back, thank you, Alicia. Let's come back to item six. Um, the other, the other property was the, um, the 4.3 acre site that the Humane Society has offered, uh, as, as part of this project. Um, there's, the, the pros and cons that I heard from the Task Force was the pros was right there next to, um, uh, Lear Park, close vicinity of Lear Park. Uh, and bringing, from an education standpoint, bringing the kids in from the park and being able to see the animals, the other side of that coin, someone said was, well, they're busy playing ball, they don't have time to come visit the shelters, I, I don't know. But, um, I, I, I think there was also the concern that maybe there wasn't enough property here for future expansion. Um, but were there any other negatives toward this piece of property?
Mayor, Council, if you would like to see some examples of this, I believe Mr. Brevard's presentation actually shows a, a potential location, uh, of a facility on both of those properties, if you'd like to see that.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
That's why you filled out the speaker card, I'm Brent. This is a work session.
That, it's not that one, it's the, uh, the one that says, that one, yeah, BB for Brent Brevard. We go all the way down to, Brent, you may wanna present this.
The Humane Society has had a shelter designed for that facility, there's the floor plan there, thirty-two thousand square feet, so it's a little bigger actually than, than the target for this one. And as you can see, a little more expensive. This is how it fits on that site. So it's got parking, building in the middle, exercise yards, and a couple of dog parks there. So it's plenty big, uh, for that building. Uh, as far as expansion goes, here's a little 3D, uh, image that we, we put on the site. Uh, and you can see, it, it's got room for expansion even at 4.3 acres. This is the Hensley Park site. A little hard to see with these lights. Uh, the softball fields are down here, there's a park with playground equipment here, and there's a, a parking lot right here in these trees. Uh, the area between the parking lot and the creek, I believe, is about a little over four acres, so again, uh, it's, it's similar in size and, and there's plenty of room to build this facility with room for expansion. Uh, there is about a 12-foot drop in the topography from the edge of the parking lot to the creek. So that's a bit of a challenge, but, uh, it, it can be overcome.
Okay. Um, there was one, there was a third, there was a third location discussed that's, uh, and, and that was, um, Alicia, Ms. Nolte, um, mentioned a piece of property that, that she and her husband own, that's somewhere around the mall, as I understand.
Straight across the street on Jackson Road, no, on McCann Road.
On McCann Road, that, uh, they may would be interested in donating, uh, and that there's some, and how many acres is that, Alicia?
Um, ours, the, is almost three acres, and there's fifteen acres surrounding it, behind it and beside it. And, um, we talked to the gentleman today, it's for sale, and, um...
Yeah, what's it for sale for?
He, he hasn't, he hasn't told us, but, um, what we told him we were interested in, if it was easier to buy all of it, or would he sell it out proportionally, not the front side that we already have, 'cause that's where the most expensive, but the, if we wanted to require, like buy four of the acres, that we could, right behind it.
So we have another option, uh, to look at, um, with, with that piece of property. What I, what I'd like to do is, is ask Kevin and Brent to maybe get with Alicia, and maybe we could come back with something like this, Brent, to kinda look at that layout and, you know, give us some ideas exactly where it's located and whatnot. Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Ricardo?
Ken, the family that owns the land at Hensley Park, uh, what's their temperature about now?
Um, honestly, I'm not sure.
We don't know.
They, they'd actually donated it to the city, but when they did the donation, there, there was a caveat, that if the facility was ever used for something other than park use, it would revert back to the family.
Right.
Typically, we've always asked that family if these uses were okay.
I, um, spoke with Bob Cargill almost three years ago when this first came up, Rick, Richard, and, um, he was, hey, very supportive, he got with his sister, coming back, said they were fine with that. This whole article in the newspaper, in this whole, um, you know, concern and, and backing away from this project was due to all the negativity that was being generated against the Humane Society, because they are longtime contributors to the Humane Society, and they were not at all happy with the way the Humane Society was being treated, and that's, that's exactly why they backed their, they, they backed away from it.
Okay.
Now, they're, they're, and in the paper, it was quoted that if all the parties come together and agree, then we'd reconsider. Well, that ain't never, I mean, that's never gonna happen. But, but the reality is, thanks to Dr. Glaze and this committee, we're a whole lot closer to that happening than we were to begin with, so.
So they haven't, uh, said no?
Uh, Sidney?
Yes, uh, Ms. Nolte?
Yes, sir.
Can, can we hear it back there?
Yeah, she can come up.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. The, the, the piece of property that you have out on McCann is a very, in my opinion, be desirable piece of property. The people that are located adjacent to it, I think, uh, is it the Red Lobster, or what's it, no, is it?
It's that restaurant that always, it's like, I don't know, it's, it's a place that doesn't work.
Oh, it's been, Sam, what is it, Sam's Southern Seafood?
Sam's, yeah, that's what it is now, but it's been Chinese restaurant and all kinds of things. And we bought that, originally, we were gonna put Cherry Hill there, and then the other one came available, that fire station that we paid crazy, too much money.
Y'all did very well with that, thank you.
It's a high-visibility location.
It was close to my house.
Yeah.
Um, have you, have you had any, um, conversation with the property owners adjacent to you?
I thought you were just saying earlier, they?
Do you think there'd be any problem with, with adjacent property owners?
Over there on McCann Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have spoken to three of the neighbors, and they're animal lovers, and they were like, they knew what, what we were working towards a center. And I believe that hopefully the people, the people that, um, that is talking to the city about the box, we've gotta make sure that they're not thinking of what is allowed and what we've had and what might exist in their, in their community. But I did tell these people, informed them what an animal center was. So, you know, it's bringing your city in together. And then, um, the back acreage backs up to the dog trail.
Okay.
Right, I believe, it's, it's a certain amount of, we can find out through Kevin. But, you know, that's, that's a good location also, by the mall and different things, and it's not on the loop. So.
Well, what is, the benefit of this would be, most of the property around is developed, so you're not jeopardizing.
Just on that left side.
Yeah.
And then, and, and the dentist, that is their kinda catty corner, he didn't have a problem with it either.
Okay. Would there be any problem, Mr. Cummings, as far as zoning on this, or I guess we could take care of it?
No, there, I don't believe there would be any problems on the zoning, we could, we could double-check that. There, there is, uh, some flood plain in that area, I don't know how it impacts, if at all, this property, uh, but we would, we'd be able to look at that and bring that back to you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay, uh, let's, let's look at item seven. Task Force discovered that of the most recently built animal shelters, most effective and efficient with those in which shelter staff were actively involved in design considerations. As such, Task Force recommends that a, that a search for the shelter manager of a new facility begin immediately, and that as soon as possible qualified applicant be hired using funds from the city of Longview or Gregg County. Um, questions on that? And, and the, uh, the, the thing we found in Chattanooga with the executive director, I guess she's the executive director there, was after they got into construction, enduring construction, um, she, I mean, they, they found things they, they needed to do a different way and correct, uh, and even after the construction was over, well, we wish we would've done this instead of done that. So I think what they're recommending is, is that, you know, the, the, the key to this whole thing, in my opinion, is having a good quality, you know, super-good executive director that understands exactly what's, what's, what we're trying to do here. What we're trying to do here is to, is to provide the community and, and people interested in adoption, a very quality animal, you know, from the shelter, and, and, and how to operate in such a way that it literally, you know, can, can maybe even make money, okay? And there's people out there, uh, and I, I'll tell you that, you know, I've spoken to Mike Orne, he's got people in his organization, he trains, and they move to different parts of the country. Um, uh, so what, what we should do is, I'm not exactly sure how to go about this, but what we should do is to start inter, uh, start seeing if we can get some applicants for that position, uh, as we move forward, to see, uh, see who's out there and what the level of interest is, 'cause that's, that's, in my opinion, that's, that's the key person. Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
You know, during that period of time when he was here, uh, you and I both approached him about, did he have someone?
Right.
And, uh, I think at that time, if I recall, he recommended that, uh, you, uh, come to San Diego and maybe interview, uh, maybe the both, both of us.
Well, he's, um, he, he did talk about that, and I know Alicia's spoken to him and has been out there several times, and, uh, she, she also had, um, I, I guess it's an assistant to Mr. Orne that's out there that expressed some interest.
Good.
She, she really would like to move to Texas, uh, she's got a really, really good background, it sounds like, but, you know, what, what we need to consider, and that's the thing today, is that the person that, that, that's, you know, hired to be the executive director, you know, is a very, very important part of this whole project, and without it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be successful. And of course, one of the things we gotta do, I mean, you gotta get the 501 set up because, and, and the board set, because they're the ones that are gonna hire, I mean, we can't go hire the person, and we, we're already in defiance of our recommendation before we ever get started. So, and, and that'd be a question for the city attorney's office. Um, what, what, what is the timeframe on getting one of these nonprofits set up? Where is it?
Kristen, Kristen's very, yeah.
I would say three to six months.
Three to six months? Good Lord, can't you?
No.
No?
They don't rest later.
IRS has to review.
Really?
Right. I mean, the paperwork would probably take, and I've offered, um, along with the city attorney's office, I'm sure that we could put that together relatively quickly, but just hearing back from the IRS is at least three months, probably closer to six.
We set up the education foundation, it took that long, and, uh, you can't put anything in any kind of literature, you can't say you're a 501(c)(3) until you get the formal, you can say pending.
But, but, but you could go ahead and set up your organization.
Exactly.
But you can't say, okay, so we could get the board seated, but it wouldn't be a nonprofit till, till that came through?
And, you know, typically, they'll, if everything isn't just perfect, they'll write back and say, we have questions of this, this, and this, and you gotta answer it.
Right.
It took us almost 12 months.
But we could start operating, we could seat the board and start operating, but we just couldn't call ourselves a nonprofit till that actually, till that actually happened. Okay.
Thank, yes, sir.
Well, your, your talk was so good, I forgot what I was gonna ask about.
Okay, we'll go into the next one then.
No, 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 no. I think, Dr. Glaze, Dr. Glaze?
Wait.
I think when, when Dr. Glaze mentioned that he had visited several, um, sites in his presentation the other night, was it in Arlington, where they had the dog paws up on the roof of the, uh?
That was, uh, Ervin. Lewisville.
Lewisville, okay.
Lewisville and, uh, Carroll.
Personally, uh, I would like to make a trip over there and visit some of those, so we have an idea of what we're looking at, and I would hope that some of the other And I would hope that some of the other city council people might also, so we have an idea. I think it's, you, you need people that have got experience in, in the design. There's no question about that. The more experience you can put, the better your design's gonna be, so there's no question about that. Uh, one thing, thank you, and down at the bottom, a qualified applicant, uh, using funds from City of Longview and Gregg County. I would be much more in favor of just, uh, putting a small pot of money out there and hiring somebody that's not a City of Longview employee to, to work on, uh, starting this up, instead of putting them on the payroll as a City of Longview employee. Something happened to them, you got liability, you got a lot of exposure when you just go out and hire somebody and put them on the City of Longview payroll.
Hire them to do what?
Well, that, this, it says right here, a qualified applicant be hired using funds from City of Longview. Does that mean a City of Longview employee?
That's the executive director, but there.
Does that mean a City of Longview employee, or does that mean?
Well, well, that right, in, in my opinion, we'd have to seat a board. The board would have to go through the, the applicant interview process and then hire, okay, that executive director. But what we discussed early on about the cost of operating, that's where we'd put, put funds in, but we.
I would desire that we do not put this person on the City of Longview payroll initially.
No, they wouldn't be, they'd, they'd be working for that, that nonprofit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, how about number eight? Um, we recommend that the above shelter manager create an initial SOP for a new facility, and that the, that the SOP be approved by the ACAC, ASAC is the correct. Okay, so again, what, what the board recommends, the Task Force recommends, is that, you know, we get this person hired pre-construction and, uh, and because they're gonna oversee and make sure of the construction, working with whoever the contractor would be. And that person would also be working in conjunction with the AC, A, ASAC and the board to develop a set of standard operating procedures, uh, so that's, I would think that's pretty much standard. Any, any questions on that? Okay, number nine, recommend that a feasibility study and a needs assessment be conducted by either contracted firm or by the shelter design group recommended below prior to beginning the design of the, uh, future animal shelter.